Thank you very much, Sun. Good morning, everyone. The May, what's today? The May 13th, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting of the Neighborhoods Education, Civil Rights and Culture Committee will come to order. It's 9:32 a.m. I'm Tammy Morales, Chair of the Committee. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Present.
Councilmember Strauss? Vice Chair Sawant? Chair Morales?
Here.
Three present.
Thank you. We do have quorum, and I believe Councilmember Strauss, oh, is just joining us. So, good morning. Councilmember Strauss is here as well.
Good morning, President. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, if there's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, today's agenda is adopted. At this time, we'll open the remote general public comment period. I believe we do have at least one person signed up. So, I ask that everyone be patient as we operate this system. It remains a strong intent of Council to have public comment regularly included in our meeting agendas. But if the Council, we do reserve the right to modify these public comment periods at any point if we deem the system as being abused. I'll moderate the public comment period in the following manner. We have up to 20 minutes. I don't think we will need it all. And each speaker will be allowed two minutes in order to comment. I'll call on two speakers at a time in the order registered on the website. If you have not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can sign up before the end of the public comment period by going to the Council's website at seattle dot com slash council. And the public comment link is also listed on today's agenda. Once I call a speaker's name, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone, and an automatic prompt of you have been unmuted will be the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. The speakers must press star six before beginning to speak. Please state your name and the item you're addressing. And as a reminder, public comment should relate to any item on today's agenda. You'll hear a chime when 10 seconds are left. And once you hear the chime, please begin to wrap up your comments. If you do not end your comments at the time allotted, the microphone will be muted to allow us to call on the next speaker. Once you've completed your public comment, we ask that you please disconnect from the line. And if you plan to continue following this meeting, you can do that on the Seattle Channel or the listening options that are listed in the agenda. So, the public comment period is now open, and we'll begin with the first speaker on the list. And I have that with me. This first speaker, the only speaker we have right now, is Christine Vaughn. Christine, you can press star six and begin.
Thank you. I believe I am unmuted.
Yes, you are.
My name is Christine Vaughn, and I want to thank you, Councilmembers, for considering these important appointments today. I am currently serving in position two on the Pike Place Market Historical Commission, and I thank you for addressing the reappointment of Stephanie Young and the confirmation of Leslie Bueker to the commission. I've had the pleasure of serving with Stephanie for over a year and can vouch for her conscientiousness and commitment to serving the market. Leslie Bueker is the Friends of the Market nominee to be my replacement for commission position number two. Friends of the Market is pleased to nominate such an enthusiastic and capable candidate, and her patience to serve, her patience with the process speaks to her determination and willingness to serve. I look forward to the successful confirmation of these candidates, as well as the other two on the agenda. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Christine. I don't see any other commenters. Is that correct?
There are no more public comment registrants.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our list of speakers. And so, we'll move on to the first item on our agenda. Will the Clerk please read item one into the record?
Agenda item one, appointment 2188. Appointment of Hamdi Mohammed as Director, Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, for briefing and discussion.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Devin. I am very excited to have currently interim director Hamdi Mohammed here before us. And we are going to hear from Senior Deputy Mayor Monisha Harrell, who will present Hamdi to the Council. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much. This is, this is a remarkable day. First of all, thank you, Councilmember Morales, for allowing me to speak at your committee. Councilmembers, it is my pleasure today to introduce Mayor Harrell's nominee for Permanent Director of the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, Hamdi Mohammed. The last time Hamdi appeared before this committee, it was to present her office's 2022 work plan. And I believe it was Councilmember Strauss who told her how he said, "I'm looking forward to your confirmation process." Well, Councilmember, you know I like to do whatever I can for partnership and to make you happy. So, I'm just as excited as you are today that the day has come. We've had the opportunity to hear from interim director Mohammed about her lived experience as a former refugee and her intended vision and path forward for the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. So, you already know what a superstar Mayor Harrell appointed as interim director. She brings endless enthusiasm, a deep, deep connection to Seattle's multicultural communities, and has no shortage of new ideas. When she started in the position just a few months ago, she was already prodding her community listening tour, which I'm sure you will hear more about. As our office consulted with executive directors from community organizations and stakeholders, all knowingly spoke to Hamdi's abilities because they'd already been working with her for years. Those organizations include One America, Asian Counseling and Referral Services, El Centro de la Raza, Refugee Women's Alliance, Northwest Immigrant Rights Project, East African Community Services, and Collective Legal del Pueblo. Each was enthusiastic about her nomination. It was no surprise, considering she's been a consistent community fixture as a former employee at the Refugee Women's Alliance, at the Office of Congresswoman Jaipal, and at King County. Mayor Harrell took particular pride in this nomination, considering he was the primary sponsor of the groundbreaking legislation that created the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs in 2012. It's thanks to your investments, Councilmembers, that the office has exponentially grown in its size since its origin. And we hope, under Director Mohammed's leadership, the office will only continue soaring to new heights. We know that's the case. Mayor Harrell and I are thankful for your consideration of her nomination today. And with no further ado, I'd like to turn things over to Director Mohammed.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Harrell. Thank you for that warm introduction. Thank you for the opportunity to serve alongside you. Good morning, honorable members of the Committee of Neighborhood Education, Civil Rights and Culture. It is with great honor and privilege to come in front of you again as the interim director of the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. And to seek your appointment today, I am so proud to be serving in this position and to build upon the work of the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. Its legacy is tremendous. It's a tremendous honor and also a huge responsibility that I take very seriously. And I also want to just take a moment to acknowledge the leadership of my predecessor Ku Vu, who helped navigate OIRA through an anti-immigrant federal administration and many other challenges. I have deep respect for her and am looking forward to continuing the good work of the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. My drive to be the director of this office is rooted in my lived experience and professional experience that Deputy Mayor Harrell has already spoken on. I came to this country as a refugee from Somalia when I was three years old. I am a product of Seattle Public Schools. I went to Chief South High School. I take so much pride in being a member of this community. As you've heard before, joining the city of Seattle, I have spent many years dedicated my life to public service, serving as a policy advisor for King County, where I advised and on the $12 billion county budget, managed initiatives that invested millions into our small businesses, community organizations, and COVID-19 response. I have witnessed the impacts of decisions made by government. I understand the needs of our immigrant and refugee communities and have a strong desire to lead a department that is focused on providing essential services. Both my professional and personal life, lived experiences, has tied me very closely to this office. It was nearly a decade ago when I was one of the many, many community members who advocated for the formation of this office. I remember even in 2014, serving on OIRA's immigrant voting task force and helping produce a report that analyzed and addressed the civic and political issues that immigrant communities faced. I helped provide recommendations for improving our voting infrastructures and making sure that our immigrant and refugee communities have access to our political process, that they understand how policies are made, that they know who their council members are. And so, having the opportunity to continue that is, is just so exciting for me. And I have six priority areas this year, one of them being regional and across departmental collaboration, Equitable Healthy Seattle Initiative, advancing an inclusive economic recovery, ensuring that our immigrant and refugee communities are connected to workforce development opportunities, also ensuring Seattle continues to welcome our immigrant and refugee communities, and expanding safety and accesses for our immigrant and refugee communities. And building community partnership is all top priority areas for me. I have met just short period of time that I've been in this office. I've already met with dozens of community leaders. I've conducted need assessment surveys for our program. I've been talking to our program grantees to help inform our office about the most pressing community problems. I have led our office in responding to the evolving Afghan and Ukrainian refugee crisis through regional partnerships and have brought my longstanding relationships with leaders at the federal level, local level, and even at the state level with me to ensure that our office will work together to address some of our region's most pressing issues. It would be an honor to continue to lead this office. And again, thank you for this time today. Thank you, Chair and Councilmember Tammy Morales, Member, Councilmember Dan Strauss, Councilmember Sarah Nelson, and Councilmember Andrew Lewis for giving me this time to present to you all and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hamdi and Deputy Mayor Harrell. I am thrilled to, to have you here in committee. You know, you are well-known in our city because of your, your work ethic, your commitment to serving, your connections and advocacy, longstanding advocacy for our immigrant and refugee populations and our communities here. So, I am thrilled to have you in front of us for consideration. You were kind enough to answer, I think, over a dozen questions that our councilmembers submitted to you. I wanted to highlight a few things that you talked about in, in your answering to those questions, but I do want to open it up to my colleagues first and see if anybody would like to make some remarks or have any questions for, for Director Mohammed. Not yet. Oh, Councilmember Nelson.
So, I had the opportunity of a one-on-one meeting with interim director Hamdi, and she answered many of my questions about priorities, and particularly the immigrant family program. So, I, I am aligned, of course, with, with the priorities that were presented in all the programs last time. But I also just wanted to say that I have seen you out in community at numerous events. And it's over the course of those more informal conversations that your commitment has really shown through and your, your breadth of knowledge about all things impacting this community and also ways in which your perspective can aid Seattle in our policies. So, I just wanted to say I am excited about this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Well, I, excuse me. Again, I am thrilled to have you before us, Hamdi. I wonder if you could talk just a little bit. You mentioned two things that you are planning to do that are kind of setting new course for the department. You mentioned creating a strategic plan for the department and quarterly reporting on the RSJI work that your office is doing. I wonder if you can just talk a little bit about how those processes will be set up for folks in your department?
Yeah, the strategic, I can start with the strategic plan, and thank you for that question. You know, it is, I have so many priority areas, six priority areas that I really outlined. It is really important that we have a strategic plan that's like our North Star, especially for an office like ours, an immigrant refugee office, that is often dealing with emerging issues. As soon as I walked into the office, a week or two later, the Ukraine crisis happened. And often what happens is we shift our focus over to that one issue. And by having a strategic plan that guides us and it sets foundation for the office. And I'm hoping to do that really in collaboration with community, in collaboration with our councilmembers and mayor, to be able to set some real goals and priority areas that drive our work, whether we are responding to emerging needs or not. It will be our North Star where we can, so holding those listening sessions will inform that strategic plan, as well as being able to also look at the city as a whole. Immigrant and refugee issues is not, is not issues that sit in one particular office. We have to, you know, cut through the silos of, of the city departments, right? We have to look at partnerships with our Office of Economic Development, with Labor, our Labor Standards Office, our environmental departments, and ensuring that when I'm, when we're putting that strategic plan together, that it's also in collaboration with those departments and that we analyze other, other programs across the city to be able to help also the city of Seattle respond to the immigrant and refugee needs. And I hope that strategic plan will also serve well to not only our office, but also other departments in the city. And then, in regards to our, the RSJI initiative, I, as, you know, the only Black immigrant in my office, I do bring a unique lived experience to the department. I believe the city must, you know, obviously focus on and building leadership and collective power in both our Black community and our BIPOC community to help them influence public policy, drive things like social change. And so, what I'm hoping to do is ensure that we have a pro-equity lens embedded in all of our, our programming and making sure that our RSJI initiative priorities are really baked into each one of our priority areas. And, you know, I hope to do that in a way that we evaluate our, our programs in our office, that we set pro-equity policy agendas for the office, ensuring that our staff members have the appropriate trainings that they need, that we are co-creating with each other in, in our office and with our Office of Civil Rights. There's already great work that the office is doing around that. And so, I'm going to make it a priority to really ensure that, you know, our Black immigrant communities are really also front and centered in our, our policy development as well.
Yeah, that's great. And I, you know, one of the, one of the things you responded in the questionnaire was about this need to make sure that these issues are addressed in every department. As you said, you know, we, we can't stay siloed and think that we're going to be moving forward with creating better outcomes for people. And a sort of telling indicator of that for me was your connection to the Office of Sustainability and the Environment, right? And, and really being able to look at the disparate impacts on our immigrant and refugee populations, who are mostly in South Seattle, and the impact of, you know, air pollution, you know, highways, the port, all of the, the airport, all of the issues that are important to our economy, but do have, you know, poor outcomes in terms of the health of our, some of our neighbors. And so, it is important for us to work together to address those issues, to mitigate when we can and to make sure that the health outcomes that, that our communities are, are dealing with are improved. So, I just appreciate that, you know, particular issue that you raised and, and as an example of how we need to be thinking, thinking a little bit differently across departments. The other thing I wanted to, to ask about was you mentioned, and Deputy Mayor Harrell mentioned, the small business districts, the listening tours. And you were talking about, you know, particularly the immigrant-owned businesses in the city and how we can better support them. Do you have a couple of things you might want to share about how we can do that better?
Yeah, we were, Councilmember Morales, we were just on a tour together, you know, taking a look at the Little Saigon community and the, the way that, the ways that they have been impacted by this pandemic. You know, this pandemic has hit our small businesses communities really, really hard and even harder for folks, for small business owners who are limited English speakers, who often struggle with being able to have access to fundings, grants, applications, filling out those, those grants applications. So, many of them did not receive funding during the federal dollars that came from the economic recovery packages. And, and it's so important that our office is, you know, center, thinking about economic development, workforce development in partnership with the Office of Economic Development. So, I have been reaching out to Markham, interim director Markham, and talking to him about ways for our two offices to collaborate. We are talking about the possibility of a shared position, having a, you know, this has not been put in place, but we even talked about it. It's just an idea, right? I think Deputy Mayor Harrell said earlier, "I'm, I'm not short of ideas." One of the ideas is, is being able to, to think about ways our teams can collaborate or even having shared positions where, you know, we have policy advisors who really bring an economic development lens and can also bring a focus around immigrant and refugee needs, incorporating things like language access into our economic development plans and ensuring that we are reaching out to those small businesses who often, you know, are, who are limited English speakers and might, may not know about the resources that are available to them. So, for, for them to keep their doors open and continue to serve our community, we have to be really intentional in building partnerships with them. And the way I see doing that is really working in collaboration with the Office of Economic Development. And so, I intend to do that intentionally, you know, as part of the, the listening session tours. I would like to hold a, a listening session with the Office of Economic Development to hear directly from immigrant-owned businesses all across our city of Seattle and incorporate that into the strategic plan as well.
That's great. Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions for Director Mohammed? I am not seeing any. Well, I want to thank you both for being with us just for the viewing public. The process here is that we were having this meeting for the purpose of discussion, introduction to interim director Mohammed. And then, at my next committee meeting on May 27th, we will actually take the vote. And so, if there's nothing else, I appreciate you both being here. Thank you so much. Looking forward to our next meeting.
Thank you so much for, for having us both here today. And I just, I couldn't be more excited about Director Mohammed's complete process. And, you know, I think you've seen that not only will she be an asset to OIRA, but she will be a real asset to helping us break down the silos between departments and communities to make sure that we are serving our, our communities more holistically. So, thank you so much, and it's an honor to be here.
Thanks so much, y'all. See you soon.
Thank you all.
Okay, Devin, will you please read item two into the record?
Agenda item two, appointment 2189. Appointment of Leslie Bueker as member Pike Place Market Historical Commission for a term to December 1st, 2023, for briefing, discussion, and possible vote.
Terrific. Thank you so much. We have with us from the Department of Neighborhoods, Min Chali, to present Ms. Bueker. Min, are you with us? There we go.
Yes, I am. Thank you very much, Councilmember and Chairperson Morales and other councilmember colleagues for taking the time to hear the Pike Place Market Historical Commission nominees, among your many other priorities that you face. I'm Min Chali from the Department of Neighborhoods. I am the staff coordinator that supports the Pike Place Market Historical Commission. And today, I'll give you some brief background about the commission and its work, as well as a brief introduction to the candidate, Leslie Bueker. The Pike Place Market Historical Commission was established in 1971, the same time that the Pike Place Market was established as a formal protected entity in our municipal codes with a preservation perspective. The commission consists of 12 members when fully populated, and their role is to make regulatory decisions about a range of activities in the Pike Place Market Historical District, including alterations to physical exterior and interior of buildings and shops, right-of-way work, and changes to use. The 12-member committee represents a range of different market perspectives and stakeholders, including Friends of the Market nominees, of which Leslie Bueker is one, market merchants, people who live within the district, architects, a property owner, two representatives from the Allied Arts Organization, and one at-large member. Apparently, there are four vacancies on the position if we are successful in filling the two that are being reviewed today. So, we very much appreciate your time in considering the nominations and look forward to making a big push towards recruitment immediately after to fully populate and strengthen the commission at this time when the market is emergence, emerging from some challenging circumstances. And the commission seeks to play a supportive and partnership role in that recovery. A few quick words about Leslie Bueker before she shares a few words on her own behalf. Again, she's a representative from the Friends of Market Organization, a longtime advocacy organization for the market. This would be position number two, serving until the end of December 2023. And we are very excited about Leslie Bueker, who brings an extensive background in the arts, public event management. Blanking, I'm sorry, Leslie. Arts, public event management and marketing. And so, those are going to be really critical skills as the market emerges from this pandemic, perhaps with what looks to be like renewed opportunity for innovation among businesses, the community there. So, we're very excited to have those skills to support that movement. Leslie also brings some very practical, real-life experience of the confluence of preservation in dense urban settings. As a longtime and very active member, where she lives in a landmark building that's located in the heart of downtown. So, with that, may I hand it over to the candidate to share further? Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you for that introduction, Min. I want to start by recognizing and thanking Christine Vongen, who we heard from earlier today for her work on the Pike Place Market Historical Commission for the past several years. Her efforts have helped to ensure that the mission of the commission has both been met before and during the pandemic. And she's also helped to find suitable candidates to fill open positions such as myself. So, thank you, Christine. A little bit about myself. I'm a 14-year resident, currently residing two blocks from Pike Place Market, which I visit daily. I'm a design professional in the advertising industry, and I volunteer my time to community organizations, including Friends of the Market, the Crisis Text Line, Crisis Connections, and my own homeowners association, where I worked to preserve and maintain the 110-year-old historic landmark where I live. So, I'm very excited for the opportunity to combine my professional design background and my volunteer experiences within the community to help preserve this local treasure that I value so dearly, Pike Place Market. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Leslie. I think people forget that there are also very important services at Pike Market, right? There's senior housing and support for our senior community members. So, thank you for that work that you do. Colleagues, any questions for Leslie? Colleagues, any questions for Leslie? Okay, I I think, let's go ahead and speak with Stephanie too, and then we will vote on both of these together. Min, did you want to say anything about Stephanie?
Yes, absolutely. While Stephanie is coming on and preparing herself, it would be great to just share some of my observations. So Stephanie started as a new commissioner during the pandemic. So jumped feet-first right in at a very challenging time when there were very new and unprecedented situations that the market community, the commission itself, and city government, and Department of Neighborhoods were navigating. And she did so, just so ably and skillfully and quickly gained the respect of her peers. In her first year, she was nominated to serve as the vice chair, which I feel is pretty extraordinary and speaks to just how adept and how quickly she caught on to everything, especially in the challenging context of the pandemic. She declined at that time, which is a decision we respect, but as of last week was appointed to be the 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 chair of the Use Review Committee that evaluates all incoming businesses and changes to use in the market. And so again, that just really speaks to Stephanie's aptitude and skills and relationship building and the respect that she has quickly garnered among her peers in the community. And I also want to say that Stephanie brings an extensive business background. And so I feel that that will be a very valuable asset to the commission. And it's a lens that is just really critical in helping make decisions that are based on balancing the needs of the many different interests and stakeholders in the market.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Min. Stephanie, do you have comments you'd like to make? Please go ahead.
Well, thank you for for the opportunity. I hesitate to say anything because everybody says such nice things about me. I don't want to say anything that would track from that. So I have been a long-time Seattle resident, almost over 30 years. So the Pike Place Market, I'd like to think, has been part of my history, and I hope I've been part of its in the past. I was previously part of the Friends of the Market Board, which I joined in order to learn more about the market and some of the intricacies and and stakeholders and the operations of the of the market. So it's an important historical and economic resource for not only Seattle, but the entire region and even the state, number one visited place that that people come to see. I've led tours of volunteer, I've I've trained and led tours, trained volunteers and led tours at the market from an art and historical perspective so that people, other people can understand what's led up to this precious resource that we now have. And as Min Chao mentioned, I joined right when the pandemic hit, and now I look forward to helping it thrive after the pandemic is easing up, hopefully. So thank you for the opportunity to be considered, and that's all I need to say.
Thank you so much. Well, and I do think that, you know, even before the pandemic, the market was such an important place for our small businesses, for entrepreneurs, for farmers, for craftspeople, you know, artists. There's, it really is a beautiful cultural space and an important economic space as well. So thank you for stepping up to help make sure that that the business side of what's going on there is also protected and and considered. The sustainability of all of that is considered. Colleagues, are there any questions for Stephanie? Okay, so Devin, if I could ask you to also read item three into the record, because I don't think we have done that yet, and then we'll vote on both appointments at the same time.
Agenda item three, appointment 2190, reappointment of Stephanie Young as member Pike Place Market Historical Commission for a term to December 1st, 2024, for briefing, discussion, and possible vote.
Okay, so we've had discussion. Colleagues, I move that the committee recommends approval of appointment 02190 and 02, whoops, sorry, just lost it, appointment 2189. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of both appointments. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Chair Morales?
Yes.
Three in favor?
Four?
Four in favor.
Thank you. The motion carries, and the committee recommendation that the council approve the appointments will be sent to the May 24th City Council Meeting. You are welcome to join. You are not required to be there. So I want to thank you now for your willingness to serve the community and look forward to your work. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Silvernail, will you please read item four into the record?
Agenda item four, appointment 2107, reappointment of Paul Neal as member Pike Place Market Preservation and Development Authority Governing Council for a term to June 30th, 2024, for briefing, discussion, and possible vote.
Thank you. This is a reappointment, and so Mr. Neal is not present. I just want to confirm that. I do not see him. I do think it's important, though, just to say a few words about what the Pike Market PDA is. So I'm going to do that briefly, and then I'll say a few words about Mr. Neal, and we can vote on him. So the Pike Market Preservation Development Authority is a nonprofit public corporation. We have a few of them here in the city of Seattle. This one was chartered in 1973 to manage the properties in the Nine Acre Market Historic District. The PDA is responsible for preserving, rehabilitating, and protecting market buildings, increasing farm and food retail operations in the market. I could go on about our food system and how important it is to protect our our local farmers, but I won't do that right now. And supporting small and marginal businesses and providing services for low-income families. PDA activities are governed by a 12-member council. And of the 12 members, four are appointed by the mayor, four are elected by the Pike Place Market constituency, and four are appointed by a PDA governing council. This council acts as the oversight board of the PDA and provides guidance through monthly committee meetings and approval by resolution of policies, the the PDA annual budget, et cetera. So this council, in essence, acts to preserve the integrity of the market. Mr. Neal, as I said, is being reappointed. One was Stephanie's, sorry, reappointed by the governing council itself. He's principal of 6H Consulting, a marketing and brand consultancy that he created in 2001. The firm helps organizations build richer, stronger relationships with customers and works, its work includes strategic planning, market analysis, product development, and communications planning. So he is, has consulted with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, the Pike Market Foundation, Seattle Parks Foundation, Wing Luke Museum. He's a graduate of Leadership Tomorrow and past board president of the Northwest AIDS Foundation. So he is being reappointed by the governing council. And I am recommending, moving that the committee recommends approval of appointment 02107. Is there a second? Can I get a second on the?
Second.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of the appointment. Colleagues, any comments or questions?
No.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis? Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Chair Morales?
Yes.
Four in favor?
Thank you. The motion carries, and the committee recommendation that the council approve the appointment will be sent to the May 24th City Council Meeting. We have worked our way through the agenda. That was speedy. Before concluding, I do want to give my colleagues the opportunity to share any final thoughts for the good of the order. Is there any other business before the committee? Okay. In that case, this concludes the May 13th, 2022, meeting of the Neighborhoods Education, Civil Rights, and Culture Committee. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 27th at 9:30. Thank you for coming. It is 10:12, and we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.